I'm going to call it orders, special and regular meeting of Board of Directors, Monterey Peninsula Water Management District for Monday, August 16, 2021 at 5:00 PM. Okay.
Roll call.
Director Roberson?
Here.
Director Adams?
Here.
Director Anderson?
Here.
Director Malik?
Here.
Director Riley?
Here.
Vice Chair Pa?
Here.
Chair Edwards?
Here.
All directors are present.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections for the closed session by the district council?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Public comment, members of public may address the board on items or items listed on the closed session agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience?
Chair Edwards, we do not have anybody in the audience.
Thank you. All right. General counsel, could you please read us in the closed session if your dog let us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you would just, for the board to consider matters in closed session.
Yeah, I thought I did that, but okay.
All right.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District on Monday, August 16, 2021, and we're looking at 6:12. Roll call, please.
Mayor Roberson? Supervisor Adams?
Here.
That was a here, I unmuted.
Good to go. Director Anderson?
Here.
Director Malik? Director Riley? Vice Chair Pa?
Here.
Director Malik? Chair Edwards?
Here.
Chair Edwards, we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. General counsel, any additions and corrections for the closed session? Oh. Our next item will be pleasure allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
The nation. The nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I'm here, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, our next item, is there any additions and corrections to the agenda?
There are not.
Thank you, general manager.
With the correction that you received earlier regarding the minutes, hopefully you all saw that.
Okay, we'll get down to that one. Okay, oral communications. Anyone wish to address the board on consent calendar, information items, closed session items, or matters now listed on the agenda may do so only during oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all other items at the time they are presented. Oral communication is now open, Joel.
So if you would like to provide public input, please raise your hand via Zoom. And if you're calling in, please push star nine. When it is your turn, I will identify you by your name. If you're calling in, I will identify you by the last three digits of your phone number. At that time, you will need to push star six to unmute yourself, and you may identify yourself for the clerk's record. If you're joining us on your electronic device and are calling in, please mute or lower your device volume to limit any feedback that may be transmitted via Zoom. Thank you, and let me take a look here. We'll give it a couple of seconds here. And Chair Edwards, I do not see any hands raised, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Well, thank you. And thanks to public. Consent calendars. Do any board members or public want anything pulled from the consent calendar? Go ahead, Director Anderson.
Pull item one. For some correction.
Okay. Any other directors? For minutes? Okay, Joel, could you ask the public, do they have anything they would like pulled from consent?
All right, at this time, please raise your hand, or if you're calling in, push star nine. Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I'll return this back to the board.
Okay. Need a motion for items two, three, four, and five to be approved.
I'll move approval.
Okay. And a second by? By Anderson, yes, okay. All right, roll call vote, please.
And the second was by Anderson, correct?
Right.
Okay. Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Roberson?
Aye.
Director Malik?
Aye.
Vice Chair Pa?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Aye.
The motion passes.
All right, motion passed seven zero. Okay, item one. Director Anderson?
Yes. The item passed.
Seven zero.
Excuse me.
Six zero. Director Malik didn't come back.
He did, it was seven zero.
All right, thank you.
Okay, this is brief, on item one, we were sent a correction that needs a correction. The only, the only text in this exhibit one B that needed unanimously striped was on page 10. The others that were marked, that were the unanimously was written out, were not correct. I mean, that unanimously, I'm sorry, was correct on the other items. Just the one on about in the middle of page 10, about the expenditure of $70,000, that one was not unanimous. And it says that was a four to three vote. So that's the only one that needed correction.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments on item one?
Move approval of item one.
Okay, we have a motion to move.
Second.
And we have a selection by vice chair, it's time. Okay. Any comments on questions? No comments, roll call vote, please.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Malik? Director Roberson?
Yes.
Going back to Director Malik?
Isn't this the same one that we objected to was for four to three to four?
Yes, and I corrected it and said it was not a unanimous vote.
Okay, so. Yes.
So that's a yes from Director Malik. Vice Chair Pa?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Seven zero, all right, thank you. Next item, general manager report. You on mute, general manager?
There we go.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. So I'll be relatively quick, so we can get to the more interesting stuff. This is compliance with the cease and desist order and seaside groundwater adjudication. As you can see, Carmel River pumping is significantly below the target to date. And keep in mind, the target to date does include the loss of 1,000 acre feet in current water year for non-compliance with the milestone, September 30th last year. And then, again, you can see, moving to Seika is always over, this target is zero, but we're fairly close in the coastal zone. But overall, we are below budget by 141 acre feet. So that is compliance. On specific projects, you can see that year-to-date, with the lack of rainfall, there was very little water that was allocated to the table 13 water right. We've not recovered any ASR water. The Pure Water Monterey water that has been deemed to be extracted actually exceeds the target to date, and that's actually a good thing. Even though it's a negative red number, it's actually good. And San City D cell continues to be up and down on a monthly basis, but they did have some production last month. And overall, we are exceeding the, these sources are exceeding the target to date, which means these alternate supplies are producing a little more than expected. The delivery for customer service line, you can see down here that we're about 34 acre feet higher than last year. I just did that math incorrectly, that we're actually lower by 34 acre feet, which is a good thing. And we've kind of been tracking that way all season long, you know, very, very flat to last year, which is good. Demand has not gone up. But of course, you know, past history doesn't really dictate, because COVID has created a, you know, flip-flop between residential and commercial use. Nothing to report on the rain front, as you can imagine. And here again is the rain gauge at San Clemente. The total has remained flat since the end of April. And here's river flow. There's still been a little bit of flow in July. I can tell you that the river is intermittent from River Mile 8.1, the Berwick well, down to the lagoon. At DeDan Pierre, which is River Mile 13, and near the Trail and Saddle Club, the reaches are also intermittent. Our fish rescues, steelhead rescues have slowed down to once or twice a week. And the front of the river is just still very weather dependent. So we're monitoring conditions daily and conduct rescues as needed. To date, 7,739 fish have been rescued. Almost all of them out of the mains, the Carmel River, 7,622, and 117 from the tributaries. And about nine of them were mature enough to be released directly to the ocean. All the rest have been brought to the Sleepy Hollow Steelhead Rearing Facility. And that concludes my report.
Okay, any board questions to the general on this report? If none, we'll move to the next item. And that side of him is district council.
Mr. Chair, did you want to discuss director's reports?
That before?
I'm sorry, I'm actually up. All right. Thank you. Yes, and in closed session, the board discussed the recent presiding officer decision that dismissed the water district's complaint against California American Water. That case number is 21-05-005. And the board voted unanimously seven oh to direct an appeal to be filed challenging this decision. And that was the action taken in closed session. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Okay, and that I, action is concerning the CPUC, correct?
That's correct.
That, all right, thank you. Okay, next item is director's report. On items, including items A, B, one, two, three, four, reports on trips, conferences, attendance, and meeting. Any directors have anything they'd like to report? Go ahead, Director Ralph.
Yes, I attended the Special Districts Association meeting on July 20th. It was interesting, they're always interesting. But they're planning to have a statewide special district conference here in our county next August. So there'll be some effort to kind of bring the statewide, I'm not sure how many there are, but there's a lot of them to our county a year from now. So that was the one thing they were discussing. The second thing was, there was a committee meeting of the water master this morning, and I attended that, and I have an ongoing concern about the accuracy or the relevancy, maybe not the accuracy, but the relevancy of some of the data that they're keeping on the replenishment fund. And I raised those questions again, but that wasn't the venue for any resolution, and I'll continue to pursue that. So no action from either one of those. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other reports? If not, go ahead, Director Adams.
Thank you. I just felt like this was something that I wanted to bring forward, because I know there's been a lot of comment about it from the general public. As most of you know, Supervisor Phillips has made a board referral to amend the Monterey County ordinance that requires desalination facilities to be publicly owned. And I anticipate that the board is going to be getting a preliminary analysis of the referral at our meeting either next Tuesday or the following, not tomorrow, but next Tuesday, the following. And this will inform the board of the level of effort and estimated time it will take for staff to process the request. So we will not be taking any action at that time. I want that to be clear, so the public understands what the process would be. And I know that this is an issue of interest for peninsula residents, is why I brought it up. Although the referral is being driven by water issues in North Monterey County and the Salinas Valley, it really will have a much broader implication. And I just felt like it was important for us to acknowledge that. So stay tuned, and I'll keep everyone apprised of what's happening around that issue.
Thank you, Director Adams. Okay, a little report from me, the chair. First, I apologize to the board. Last Monday, the district had a meeting with Senator Laird. I accidentally missed calendar that meeting. But that meeting was attended by Mayor Clyde, Director Riley, and the general manager. And my apologies to the board. And it could, the general manager, if he remember, or Director Clyde, or Director Riley, would like to say something about that meeting that day, that y'all attended for the district. Please open up. Mayor Clyde, any comments?
Yes, sure, I'm happy to do it, and I certainly understand calendars and keeping everything straight, and four or five email addresses and constant changes. So certainly understand that, Chair Allen. Yes, first of all, Senator John Laird is very approachable, extremely knowledgeable. And we were co-mayors together in the mid-1980s, I think I've told you that before. And where he still has that engine running is absolutely amazing. Has a lot of contacts in the state. And we're really fortunate to have him. So our general manager really did an excellent job of just giving a summary of where the different issues we were with. And he has a presentation, which I'm sure he won't share right now, but just gave John an update. And it ranged from Measure J to LAFCO, to the request for 75 acre feet of water for affordable housing, all of which I thought the senator was very receptive to listen to. And so he promised follow-up, and again, said he was very approachable on some of these things. What he can do is get us into committee meetings, get the ear of commissioners, many of whom worked for him, interestingly enough, over his legislative career. And so he really does have contacts that enable us to maybe get an ear of someone that normally we would not. So I'll leave it at that.
All right, Director Riley, any comments?
Yeah, just adding to it, I think he was very receptive to what was being said. I thought Dave did a nice job presenting the various issues. The interaction and the question and back and forth was active and positive, and we're lucky to have him as our state senator.
All right, general manager, any comments?
No, I think they've said it all. It was a good meeting.
Yes, very.
All right, and once again, I apologize for missing it. I had it on my calendar, I was ready to go, but it was the next day, so I'm glad I didn't show up.
Well, the meeting was much shorter.
Thank you. Okay. We'll close that item. Next item is action item, general manager.
Yes, item eight is consider approving and authorizing the district to enter into an amended and restated water purchase agreement for the Pure Water Monterey project expansion. A copy of the current draft of that agreement was made public through our board packet. Several letters have been received today, Margaret Ann Copernol, Marina Coast Water District through their attorneys, among others. I assume you've seen some of those, we've talked about some of those. There are a couple of others, and I'm sure we'll receive some more. This agreement, I don't know if you noted in the staff note, but we had nine meetings and exchanged terms over 14 times. It sounds like there may be a 15th coming. We shall see. The attorneys for each of the parties have been present. The three parties are obviously ourselves, California American Water, and Monterey One Water. The draft attached is exhibit 8A. We felt met the objectives of all three parties and was ready for public discussion, which we can proceed with as we speak right now.
Okay. Any other, any board questions at this time? If there's no board questions at this time, it'd be good to hear from the public. So how many we got out there? You on mute, Joel?
Yeah, so we have 32 attendees, and then I do see at the present moment, we have about six hands raised. So let me go ahead and share my screen here. And directors, are you able to see the timer?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then Sarah, could you invite the speakers, the speakers in? All right, at this time, I would like to invite Kathy Biella. Kathy?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay. You may make your comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and board members. My name is Kathy Biella, and I'm the mayor pro tem of the city of Marina. Marine and MCWD are right to object to section 20E. This section essentially communicates a potential blanket support of the current D cell project, despite years of the district, MCWD, Marina, Public Water Now, and Citizens for Just Water's active opposition to this project. There appears to be no specified reasons or conditions by which the district could oppose this or any other projects proposed by CalM. This would render the district unable to reject a project if, say, CalM were to levy double the rates today, or to prevent CalM from illegal water extraction from neighboring jurisdictions, be it from Marina or Casterville or Salinas. It is completely unnecessary to include such or other water source projects in this agreement. Signing a water purchase agreement must be made only on the merits of the Pure Water Monterey project to meet public water need, and should never be linked unconditionally to any projects CalM may propose in the future. The district and Monterey One Water need to preserve their ability as public agencies to take appropriate positions on future or other projects that are in conformance with statutory responsibilities. No project deserves carte blanche approval, and certainly not the current one, which has undergone years of scrutiny of legal, environmental, and justice reviews. These do not get to be erased by such an agreement. Further, if the D cell project is the default for a failed recycled water project, CalM could be uncooperative, undermining, or delay the Pure Water Monterey project in its expansion if the advancement of the D cell project depended upon this. This agreement becomes a thinly disguised effort to silence CalM D cell critics. We ask that section 20E be completely deleted. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then next up, we have Melody Chrislock. Melody, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Melody Chrislock, Public Water Now. I agree with everything that Kathy Biella just said. Point 20E in the water purchase agreement is Public Water Now's main concern. Why is CalM asking for you to support a hypothetical future project? This seems premature at best, and at worst, may not even be legal. The discretion of future boards cannot be circumscribed by any current agreement or contract, which is exactly what CalM is asking you to do. And how can you agree to support a project that doesn't even exist? What kind of a company would even try to negotiate such support as a condition? Is CalM really saying, just trust us, we'll do the right thing? Like you, we feel confident that default will never occur, and that Monterey One will be able to meet its commitment to supply the agreed-upon water from Pure Water Monterey. But nevertheless, 20E is troubling. It attempts to place limits on unknown future situations. Frankly, this is an outrageous condition. In what world does a water company who is in dire need of more water have the audacity to hold a water purchase agreement hostage to any conditions? Let alone conditions that have nothing to do with the delivery of water? Please delete 20E from the water purchase agreement. We also oppose CalM's desire to recover its stranded D cell costs from ratepayers. The 129 million that CalM has spent on its proposed D cell should fall squarely on investors. But that's up to the CPUC, and that's a fight for another day. Why are they even asking you to weigh in on this? Maybe CalM should be asking its customers if they want another 129 million dollars added to their water bills for a failed D cell project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then at this time, I would like to invite Wallace Notley. Wallace, when you're ready, please present your comment. Wallace? Okay, moving right along.
Okay, now you can hear him. Good. This, this seems unbelievable. I mean, CalM is insisting on a D cell, even though the California Coastal Commission staff said that it has fantastic, really very salient ratepayer justice and environmental justice problems, and which can give us the amount we need right now. This is not an emergency, as CalM claims that their own D cell, CalM is insisting this to make the buyout more difficult. When we do need a D cell, and that would be years to come, let us insist that it be a count that we follow the county ordinance, that the D cell be publicly owned, and that CalM does not have it. CalM is trying to make it so that no matter what happens, they're going to own that plant, and it's, they're trying to stay here in perpetuity. This would be, this is, I don't know, this is quite unconscionable. Next, CalM does not have the experience with D cell. There are other things, like IDE, that's an Israel-based engineering firm, and they've been doing D cell since the 1980s. and they've been doing D cells since the nineteen eighties. That's their specialty. And that, I mean, we haven't been enough here, the water, but the water situation there in the Mideast, it often doesn't rain for years, and so they, they've really had to focus on it. And they've been doing this not only in the Mideast, but throughout the world. They've been planning these. So, um, I don't see, uh, how they can legally insist on that. I don't think they have that right against it. And, um, so like I said, they want, they want a guarantee to be here in perpetuity. That is not just, that is not right. And, um, um, I, I, I just, um, I'm very, I, and oh, yes, the cost. They're the ones, CalM is the one that insisted on this. Even when the other data came out and said, uh, you know, we don't need it now, they're the ones that insisted and kept on trying to develop it. I don't see why we should be paying those costs. Uh, this makes this so, I mean, it, it is just so unjust in so many ways. And so, um, uh, thank you for this opportunity, uh, to speak.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to invite Marley Mountain. Marley, uh, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Uh, thank you. First, thank you to the board, the staff, and everyone who's worked so hard to get to an agreement to expand Pure Water Monterey. But next, I don't think the water purchase agreement needs to be a big Christmas tree loaded with possibly undeserved and completely irrelevant presents for CalM. CalM's demands that neither the district nor M One Water oppose its attempts to bill ratepayers for the sunk costs of the, of the D cell plant, it seems irrelevant and unreasonable, and especially since, um, I'm not sure CalM has even obtained full legal rights to a water source. CalM's additional demands that neither the district nor M One Water oppose its pursuit of approval for and the building of its D cell plant also seem completely irrelevant and unreasonable for a water purchase agreement for the expansion of Pure Water Monterey. So I hope it's reasonable to hope that the district and M One Water decide to eliminate or hugely revise the wording in item twenty. Um, perhaps you could say simply that the district and M One Water understand that CalM wishes to pursue other objectives that are taking no position on those matters and reserve the right to present relevant information to future, in future discussions of those objectives. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to invite Anna Thompson. Anna, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Yes, good evening. My name is Anna Thompson. I live in Carmel. The water purchase agreement for the Pure Water Monterey Expansion Project should be modified not to require the water district to support CalM's D cell or any other future water supply project. The current water usage statistics and future projections show that if the Pure Water Monterey Expansion Project is built, water supplies will be sufficient to satisfy customer demand for several years. But regardless of what the future holds, signing of the water purchase agreement cannot be tied to supporting any other water supply project at this time, especially supporting CalM's proposed D cell plant project. There are many unresolved issues with CalM's D cell plant, including groundwater rights, environmental damage, and degradation of coastal ecosystems, saltwater intrusion of the Marina's water basin, and with the expected rise of sea levels, the feasibility of the slant well's location and water conditions must be revisited for sure. There are way too many unknowns for the district to support CalM's proposed D cell plant at this time. Please modify the water purchase agreement not to require CalM's D cell. CalM should be willing to buy the water we need without the district's support of the current D cell plant, and that paragraph for, uh, twenty E, I believe, should be completely, uh, deleted or modified so that we don't, we're not subject to, have to depend or, or work with CalM's D cell plant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, at this time, I would like to invite, uh, Susan Skilavoni. Uh, Susan, when you're ready, uh, please present your comment.
Thank you very much, Susan Skilavoni from Seaside. First, I'm very grateful to see a water purchase agreement coming together for the PWM extension. Thank you to the district, Monterey One, and CalM for coming together and working on this. It's a crucial determinator for our water future, but I have concerns. First, I've seen the letter from the Marina Coast Water District, and I really want you to look at that to uh, assure those problems are not happening or can be resolved. Please consider especially the areas in SECA and the contractual rights. I'm also opposed to section twenty E in the water purchase agreement. While it's obvious that in the event of a default, CalM would pursue another project, forcing district, the district to pre-approve that process in order to sign a water purchase agreement is just wrong. As far as I know, there was no provision in the original Pure Water Monterey Water Purchase Agreement regarding this kind of arm twisting. Yet section twenty E gives broad discretion on what CalM can do, forcing support and cooperation, and limits the discretion of decision-making by the board, in effect, holding the district hostage to the company's plan only. This language should be changed to ensure the district is not held to the current plan, or one that could be even more damaging, since the language contains absolutely no limitation on what type of alternative project CalM may propose to the CPUC, yet the district is supposed to blindly support it. At the very least, the language should at least allow a neutral stance. The company already states clearly in several sections its intention to pursue the current project, even though it is replete with environmental justice issues, fiscal and logistical insufficiencies. The district itself has made it clear that the project is not needed in lieu of expansion of Pure Water Monterey and has produced accurate supply and demand figures to verify this. Please rework this language and do not allow CalM to force support of a plan at the risk of losing your independent decision-making ability. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have, uh, somebody, um, calling in. The phone number ending in three, one, two. Um, you may unmute yourself by pushing star six. And you also may wanna, um, identify yourself for the clerk's record.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, Margaret Ann Kopernall speaking. Congratulations. A water purchase agreement for Pure Water Monterey Expansion is a vital right action and fulfillment of fiduciary obligations to the Monterey Peninsula water ratepayers. CalM's longstanding refusal to undertake such a crucial agreement has caused unnecessary delays in alleviating our critical water supply production, so bravissimo for engaging in these indispensable negotiations. Notwithstanding, I strenuously object to including unfair, unreasonable conditions such as compelling ratepayers to pay for desalination project costs incurred prior to August thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. This is unjust and dishonest, even unconscionable, because the failure of CalM to achieve a successful D cell project is not at all the fault of the water district or ratepayers. Quite the contrary, the only entity at fault for the desalination project's hindrance is CalM and its insistence on forging a non-starter project on our communities with the express intention of violating environmental laws and purposely working to illegally destroy already critically overdrafted aquifers, a factor embedded in CalM's DIR attesting to its infeasibility, no water rights, no project. Please do not include this condition or paragraph twenty E as prerequisites for concluding a water purchase agreement. This agreement should be restricted to Pure Water Monterey Expansion parameters to the exclusion of speculations on other possible water alternatives, nor should it hinge on non-existent suppositions. The district and M One W developed this water supply alternative despite intense CalM opposition. To impose limitations on any further future district water supply achievements is unacceptable. Right now, we must firmly stand with General Manager David Stoltz's solid incontrovertible water supply and demand studies meticulous analysis of PWM expansion. CalM must bear responsibility for its negligence, environmental injustice, and threats to the survival of communities at harms. CalM alone must bear the financial burden for its tragic costly mistakes. No fault or obligation should be attributed to the water district or ratepayers. To do so holds our communities and future generations hostage to financial commitment with no assured benefit. All citizens and businesses have inalienable rights from our Creator to water for life and prosperity. CalM water rates are already unsustainably high and skyrocketing. CalM owes it to all ratepayers to remove these superfluous stipulations from the water purchase agreement. Thank you for all your wonderful work. God bless you all.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to invite Howard Wilkins. Howard, when you're ready, uh, please present your comment.
Uh, good evening, Chair Edwards and, and Board Members. Chip Wilk, or Howard Wilkins on behalf of Marina Coast Water District. Uh, my office submitted comments earlier today regarding the draft WPA. And while we expressed concerns in those comments, I would emphasize that Marina Coast agrees with district staff that Pure Water Monterey Expansion is the environmentally superior alternative to CalM's D cell project, and that in conjunction with CalM's existing supplies, it will satisfy customer demand in CalM's Monterey District for at least a couple decades. That said, MCW is concerned based on its preliminary review, and we only saw this document for the first time on Friday, that the draft WPA contains ambiguous language that could conflict with M One's contractual obligations to supply recycled water to Marina Coast. As explained in our comments, Marina Coast believes the wording in section nineteen regarding additional project participants and related language concerning the ownership of advanced treated recycled water needs to be modified to clarify the WPA is not intended to impair the separate rights of MCWD as they are set forth in existing agreements. We've included proposed language in our comments to, uh, address this issue. Alternatively, we would request that the board direct its council to meet with MCWD to craft mutually acceptable language that would clarify the parties do not intend for the agreement to create such conflicts. Marina Coast is also concerned, as we note in our letter, that the draft WPA contains internal inconsistencies and that approval of the WPA in its current form would violate SECA. Notably, the draft WPA includes dates from twenty nineteen and twenty twenty that were not met and would be the basis for CalM claiming a default the moment the agreement is signed. Therefore, we would suggest that sections twenty C one and twenty C two be deleted. In addition, section twenty E includes language that requires the district and M One Water, in the event of a default, to cooperate with CalM in an effort to obtain all the necessary permits for the existing D cell plant or any unknown substitute projects. This appears to be an inappropriate contractual term that should be removed, as you've heard from other commenters. Uh, and if the provision is retained, it must be modified to clarify it does not apply to CalM if CalM defaults, number one, and to avoid any pre-commitments to unknown projects in violation of SECA. In closing, I would reiterate, our commitment should not be construed as opposition to the district's use of Pure Water Monterey Expansion to supply water to the peninsula. We, uh, MCW is willing and looks forward to continuing to work with the district and M One Water in advancing, uh, Pure Water Monterey and Pure Water Monterey Expansion, and we look forward to meeting with, uh, your council on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, uh, Lisbeth. Uh, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Good evening. Lisbeth Fisher, resident of Marina and Chair of Citizens for Just Water. The Coastal Commission has twice recommended denial of the CalM desalination project, and a judge has ruled CalM cannot build the D cell building before a water source for the project is obtained. The Pure Water Monterey Expansion Project, E R R, has now been approved. Our question is why the district feels it necessary to concede a fundamental position of opposition to the current D cell project. Section twenty E has unreasonable criteria that are essentially for the sole benefit of CalM. If CalM refuses to sign this agreement without that section, what will be the consequences to the district? Surely, there are compelling reasons for a ninety-day requirement to sign the agreement, and surely, there is some leverage for the district, since CalM's demands are so extraordinarily one-sided and the intent of section twenty E ignores all authority of the district whatsoever. Over several years, our communities on the peninsula and, and Marina have witnessed the unfair and ruthless tactics of CalM in advancing their desalination project. Now is not the time to allow them any advantages. The district is quite familiar with, familiar with how CalM operates. The language of section twenty E reflects a complete application of any independent decision of the district to determine its own water future. This section says that the district shall cooperate and support CalM's efforts to obtain all permits and approvals of any water supply project that may be proposed by CalM as a substitute for the Pure Water Monterey project if it fails. And further, the obligations provided shall survive any termination of the agreement. This language favors CalM to the highest degree and thoroughly discounts the district's self-determination. Please do not sign this agreement as is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would like to invite, uh, John Tilly. Uh, John, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joel. Um, John Tilly, President of Monterey Commercial Property Owners Association, and, uh, to, to say that I support the expansion of Pure Water Monterey. Uh, additional water is what we need here, whatever the source may be. The real goal here is to lift the CDO. Um, I'd like to remind the community that the district seriously, completely supported the water supply project previously, which was a three-legged stool that included Pure Water Monterey, ASR off the Carmel River, and D cell. Uh, the signers include the administration that's currently in place at the water district, but not so many board members that were in place before. We've really witnessed, uh, failure of ASR due to the lack of rainfall and just pressure on seaside basin as well. Mr. Walt Notley earlier said that in the Middle East, where there's years without rainfall, uh, D cell is the pertinent answer. It is the go-to tool in such a situation, and that's the situation we face here. So I, I think I would just urge the community and the district to, instead of just naysaying D cell, consider it as a possibility here, because we have a serious water problem and we need to seriously address it. Uh, the goals here should be supplying water to our community. It shouldn't really be corporate buyouts. Um, it, it should be more about, first off, the goal is, is this district is to supply water to our communities. Let's do so. When I drive north and I, I drive through Marina, and I see what they're doing in Marina with the expansion of the subdivisions there, and I know that that water's coming from the deep aquifer, it's hard to reconcile that with the lack of housing we are able to even put in place for homeless, affordable housing here in the peninsula. Um, let's, let's look for community solutions. Let's stop building, uh, fences and start building a water supply project that works. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Michael Barron. Uh, Michael, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joel. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Uh, so related to, uh, section twenty E, my comments are CalM asking you to reverse the Coastal Commission staff recommendations. You should go against all the issues raised there to ignore the threat of carbon dioxide emissions, to ignore the damage to the aquifers, to ignore the environmental injustice to Marina, the problems of sea level rise, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And to say that it's the best plan B out there if, if. if the expansion fails for whatever reason? So please delete 20E from the agreement, as other people have asked. But also, I'd like to address that other issue raised by Melody about not objecting to covering the stranded costs. And she mentioned 129 million before the CPUC. Like, Cal Am is looking for a way out, you know, and that you won't interfere there. I must say, I have no objection to you holding a stand, signing something like that, as long as it only applies to the CPUC. There's nothing you can say that will change their mind, and I don't think that's a problem. So I don't object to that as long as you can raise the stranded cost issues during eminent domain. Because I think the judge might be very interested to learn of the $175 million, according to Cal Am's latest quarterly report, that they have spent on the project, the MPWSP. And yes, maybe in the beginning, when they're getting started, the first 25 or 30 million, not object to it because you're going forward, trying to figure it out. But talking about some date in 2019, like, forget it. Don't. You can sign something to not object to the PUC as long as you retain the right to use it as evidence against Cal Am and eminent domain. Cal Am will be asking for a full refund for those stranded costs, including their lost profits. But an eminent domain judge might see it differently. So please, don't give away any right to present that as evidence to him or her. Thank you for your time, and I know it's a difficult decision. I trust you guys to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, at this time, I would like to invite Alexander Hansen. Alexander, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Good evening. I represent Pure Water Now. Quid pro quo. One thing in exchange for another. In paragraph 20E, which I would suggest be excised in its entirety, the quid and the quo are both illegal and nonsense. The quid being the agreement by the Water District Board to make a contract where they would not challenge the D-Sell plant proposal in the future is contracting away the police power. That is unconstitutional and illegal and would render that paragraph a legal nullity. On the other side, the consideration being given by Cal Am is what? They're agreeing to pursue and consume the cheapest water available to the community? That's the consideration? It's nonsense. I would urge you to de-delete paragraph 20E in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to invite S. Fosson. S. Fosson, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Hi, am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are unmuted.
Okay, thank you. You know, I share a lot of the concerns that have already been voiced by the community. I am a Cal Am ratepayer here in Carmel Valley Village. You know, here we are in a historic drought. Cal Am has only presented us with some very exorbitant ideas for new water sources. Now we have the state-of-the-art Pure Water Monterey Expansion, which has been hailed rightfully so as one of the most important recycled water projects in California, literally a beacon for subsequent water projects in a unprecedented time of climate crisis stressors on our water systems. And here's Cal Am again, again, holding us hostage to these, you know, wanting to go ahead and have their bad, really defunct projects be supported in this kind of gross quid pro quo that is holding all ratepayers here on the Monterey Peninsula essentially hostage. We need to have 20E be deleted from the agreement or at the very least, modified in some way. How is it possible that Cal Am asks that MPWMD support the current D-Sell project or any unknown future water supply project in order for Cal Am to be willing to buy the water that we desperately need now? This is ridiculous. And I respectfully ask MPWMD to go back and modify 20E. Ratepayers should not be held hostage. We're in a crisis right now. We need new water solutions, and Cal Am can't be playing with our water supply like this. It's immoral and unethical, to say the least. Please modify 20E. Thank you.
Thank you.
And before you go, Mrs. Fosson, could I have your first name for the minutes?
Sure. It's S.A.O.I.R.S.E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Chair Edwards, I do not see any more hands raised. So I'll go ahead and return this back. Actually, I take that back. We have Karen Anderson. Karen, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you. Sorry for the late moment here. I finally saw that I could raise my hand. I am a Marina Coast Water District member, and I'd like to reply to a previous commenter who was talking about the housing developments going on in Marina. All of those houses and their future occupants' water needs are already supplied for by our existing water aquifer. So I want everybody to know that. And I also see that how disgusting it is that Cal Am is trying to come around the backside to get their names into this agreement when everybody is in, you all are in the process of figuring out how to buy Cal Am and make it, you know, create this water district as a public one. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before I return this back to the board, are there any other members of the public who wish to make public comment on item number eight? Chair Edwards, I do not see any hands raised, so I'll return this back to the board.
Hang on, it just said that Tom Rowley may have raised his hand.
Yeah, I knew we missed somebody.
Okay. Tom, I see your hand raised now. Tom, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Good evening, board members. I have to respond to the last speaker's comment about all the water that's available that's being pumped from the 900-foot aquifer, which is really, if you talk about something that's immoral and outrageous, that's an aquifer that's not going to be restored in any way in any of the lifetimes of people that are alive today. Pumping from that aquifer is, it's more than immoral, it's outrageous also. So I think that the last speaker who mentioned that is how the water is committed from existing uses? Yes, from the 900-foot aquifer. We all know that pumping from that aquifer makes no sense environmentally. So I just had to, you know, listening to the comment, I just had to respond. So thank you very much for considering everybody's comments.
Thank you, sir.
Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised.
Okay, public comment on this item is now closed. Back to the board. Board, any questions? Don't be shy. All right, there, Vice Chair, get started.
Okay, not a question. I have some things to say.
Now, you might want to say that until we make a motion or something. But if you want to say them now, go ahead.
Yeah, I do. Thank you. First, I want to, before I say my opinion, I want to thank some people. I want to thank all the people, all the members of the public who just spoke who raised legitimate concerns and were very passionate and eloquent. And it is, thank goodness that you care as much as you do. And I thank all of you for expressing your concerns. The people who contacted me, I was contacted by many people before this meeting also and raising the same concerns that we heard tonight. And I thank, I thank all of you as well. And I also want to thank our general, Dave Stoltz, our general manager and our council, who worked extremely hard to get at very difficult negotiations to get the agreement as where it is today. They worked really hard, and it was a very hard job. And I appreciate their really tremendous efforts. That said, I will not, I cannot vote for the agreement as it is with the Section 20E. I agree that it is probably illegal and wrong for the district to try and bind the board, the district in the future to not oppose unknown projects, projects that are not described. It's, the district now and in the future has to be able to exercise its discretion based on all the information they have in the law and the facts and the options and make the best possible decision. And this provision asks us to advocate that responsibility, as several of the speakers said. And I think we should, we should not, we should refuse to do that.
Okay. Any other questions right now? Go ahead, Derek. Director Adams.
This is a technical question. So, first, before I ask a question, I underscore what Director Paul just said. I think so many people, I feel that it's really terrific to see that we have come far. We have come far on agreement. There are still issues to work out, without question, without question. But I want to thank our staff, and I also want to thank the staff and the volunteers, essentially the board members of Monterey One Water, and also Cal Am for reaching this proposal, essentially. I think there's a lot that we have to continue to work on. And so with that, I wanted to ask, can you just let me clarify for me if an amended and restated agreement will also be needed for the source water agreement between Monterey One Water and Monterey County Water Resources Agency to implement the expansion project itself?
Our belief is it is not. But there have been some clarifying emails and sub-agreements that have been discussed. But yeah, there's no need to reopen the, at this point, their amended and restated water recycling agreement.
Okay, thanks. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Okay, any other board questions at this time? If not?
Oh, yes, George, please.
Well, go ahead.
I'm going to go to Section 20 briefly for a legal question. Is there a technical or substantive difference between a breach of contract and a default of performance? Should we pay attention if there's a particular difference in those two?
Well, the default is considered a breach of the contract, and therefore, they have gone into the various definition of what constitutes a breach by virtue of their various standards. And I would defer to the general manager, who has worked more closely on the specifics, both on the original as well as the proposed amended. But the breach constitutes a default.
Okay, okay. Well, that may be enough unless, Dave, you want to add something to it? I have a follow-up.
No, I don't really have anything to add. That was our understanding. The, you know, breach is defined in 20A, or the remedies for breach is defined in 20A. But a default is a breach. And so the conditions of default, basically what you're seeing in this agreement are the same conditions of default that were in the original agreement for the base project, just with slight modifications to size.
Okay.
And so if you were to follow the thread, event of default is a defined term, which can lead to termination of this agreement by election of a non-defaulting party. So they bring default and termination together, but they, I don't believe it's clearly stated that an event of default is a breach. But it is.
Well, but, okay, I can understand that. And I have a kind of a follow-up. Maybe this is more of a comment than a question. But what my concern is about Section 20 in general is that we identify specific default thresholds with delivery dates, delivery volumes, and all of that. And then the remedy of dealing with a default or the response to dealing with a default is largely contained in sub-paragraph E, which are all these other things that the public's been talking about. And so my concern is the difference between the default numbers and the action leaves out of that equation what the current demand issues are. And it leaves out the police powers that have been mentioned earlier that we have available to us to kind of make sure there's a water access. We leave out of the equation the use of reserved water that we've planned for. And if there's a default, there's some options around water supply that are ignored in this sequence of default versus remedy. And I'm just not happy with that, ignoring that relationship. And so I'm not happy with Section E. That's my point.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, this question has to do with the issues that Marina Coast Water District has raised. It's my understanding that there's, it's not the intent of the agreement, as it is so far, to impair in any way Marina Coast Water District's contractual rights to treated water, to wastewater, and so on. And I'd like to ask our general manager, am I correct that the, it's not the intent of the agreement? Or is your understanding that the agreement, the draft agreement does not impair Marina Coast Water District's rights, contractual rights, in any way?
That's right. And the original agreement for the 3,500 base project included the language that you're seeing in Section 19 of this agreement. So essentially, it was unaffected. So even using the previous language that Mr. Wilkins has said needs to be cleaned up, we already were able to make a determination that Monterey One Water could enter into an agreement to deliver supplies to Marina Coast Water District, and that such agreement exists. supplies to Marina Coast Water District, and that such agreement exists. Um, we already determined that they could be added as a an additional uh party, additional project participant. And there's an agreement for that. Um, they're already participating in the fixed costs of the project capacity to serve their initial first phase, Marina Coast Water District water. So there's nothing in that original language that subjugated their contractual rights to their own wastewater or uh imperiled their ability to be uh an additional project participant. So we've kind of already crossed that bridge. Um, I can understand Mr. Wilkins' desire to maybe clean it up or state it more clearly, but I don't think that will be a priority for us. Keeping in mind that this is a three-party agreement and adding more things to reopen is not going to help bringing this to closure. But um, you know, we'll, we'll talk to Mr. Wilkins and uh and Rem, the their general manager, at some point uh to address these issues.
Thank you.
Okay, uh GM, I'd like for y'all to look into the stranded costs. We gave approve a date, may approve the date, but what is the stranded cost? I'm hearing a hundred and seventy-five million. I heard.
Yeah, the hundred and seventy-five includes the fifty for the Monterey Pipeline.
Well, okay, I've been hearing all of that. What are in the stranded costs? And what uh can we get that information? We agreed on the date, but we need the information on how much it is and what it's for.
Yeah, every quarterly report that Cal-Am has published breaks it out into four component categories. So that's the that's all that's really publicly available at this point. Um, but it, but it is available. Um, so we can you know, you can go to the quarterly report from two thousand nineteen in uh the third quarter to get a kind of a sense of what was expended through and including that point in time. Um, the hundred and seventy-five was probably taken from the most recent quarterly report. Uh, but yeah, there's, there's data out there. It's not.
Well, I, I believe the, 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 to get that data and get it to the public, because I have a problem with just not saying that to to the PUC. You know, the date, we, we did, I approved that date, but saying nothing? No, I'm gonna say something, because I got a big mouth. And I, I, I can't help going through that, that we're gonna look the other way and Cal-Am gonna continue on with another project. And start building that back up again. So I'd like to have that data before, and if we can get that, so we can give it to the public. Another item is um on page seventy-three of our district report. The um, the one thousand seven hundred and twenty in the third paragraph.
Yeah.
Didn't that be a new number? This is the additional project that we added on. Think about it. When we did the soft start for the last project, the, the main project, that soft cost went up.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is clearly, it's purely a vestige of the original agreement. Um, our initial draft took it out. Uh, Cal-Am wanted it back in there from kind of a historical perspective to show how it began. We won't have a new number, um, because this will be predicated on uh you know, unless the PUC asks for a new basic number, but generally, when, when this comes in and gets approval, a uh a tier-one advice letter will get filed for whatever the then uh relevant uh prices. So we go through the budget cycle. We share data with Cal-Am, and then we pick for the following fiscal year, the corporate water rate. Um, so that's where we'll be at the time this agreement gets approved. Um, why we kept the soft cap language in there with, as I said, for, for cleanliness, we elected to take that out and we elected to take the initial performance start date and delivery start dates out because they had already been met and delivered.
Uh huh.
But the company wanted them back in just so you could see what the original agreement was. You know, that there's different schools of thought. Sometimes by, by having the opportunity to amend and restate, you do just that. You, you restate. Um, here, we, we, we've come with some language, you know, one of the speakers said, well, you'll immediately be in default. Well, we were in default on the uh the delivery start date, which then led to a default under the performance start date. But there were no actual damages. So those two events of default did not result in any uh mediation or settlement or, or anything. And we just chose to move on, and we've been delivering water every month since September uh last year. So we've, we've let some stuff stay in there and become resident that I don't think in the cleanest drafting sense uh should be there. And you've put your finger on it.
Well, I, I think you need to continue to negotiate that. And um, got a problem with it, because that number is going to be different. And this agreement is going to be approved someday.
Yeah, well, then keep in mind.
And that number is gone, and the note, and the new number is not in there. There's a problem there.
Yeah, we can talk about offline, but that number was the original budget number from the Phase Two CPC proceeding. So it, it established how, how it would be analyzed economically relative to a larger D cell plant without pure water Monterey. But it's already been adjusted twice, and you don't see the adjusted numbers in there because it's just a process, an annual process, so.
Okay, all right. Um, we talked about costs. Uh, I like to see those numbers. If we can get that. What we approved was the date, a cutoff date. But I think there's other things that we should be asking for that to, to show the public what that is, because I can't outright go in there and say, look the other way while they in the PUC. I think we ought to be talking to the PUC as much as possible on these costs, because we represent the ratepayers. So we need to think about that. Uh, General Counsel, did anything else we could ask in that from Cal-Am?
Well, as the general manager stated, the only thing that we've seen publicly uh are from their quarterly reports that they issue on the um Monterey Peninsula Water Supply Project. But I would think, given the board's direction, that if you are agreeing uh to be responsible for these costs, that it is appropriate for you to see the documentation. And so a gross figure, whether it is one-twenty-nine or one-seventy-five minus the fifty, that's already in rates, whatever that number is. Cal-Am can certainly document, and if you're going to agree to that amount, then yes, you ought to be reviewing the numbers to see if you believe that they're recoverable and you support it.
Well, remember, it's, th- this language is not support, this language is not oppose, which are, are two different things. And, and if you really, in your heart of heart, uh, do oppose, you can find other proxies to work on your behalf. Um, but anyway, it's a fine art of, you know, detail to just note that it's a will not oppose, not a will support.
But again, you're asking the district, you're asking the decision-makers to uh, to commit to not take action that's contrary to it. So if you don't oppose it, then you have, you have eliminated one of your options without actually seeing the details. So I think that it is appropriate for the board to see the detail, if that is what they want. And I hear Sheriff Edwards asking for that information.
That's what I want, because hey, if I'm gonna do something like that, I'm gonna show the public. Show the public what it is. I'm not just gonna give them a blanket check of, no, I'm looking the other way. And that brings me to my next point. They're starting another project. I don't care what project it is, they started another. That cost is going to start over again. It's going to start, starting over again, building up. So that's what I'm concerned about. That's why I can't sit up there and say, oh, okay. That, that's the day. And then, what's the number? I don't know. I'm not doing my job. Uh, Director Ralph.
Um, I'd like to um enter this little dialogue with, this is a little different uh point of view. Um, I think the need for information is valid, and we ought to have it, and it could come in a report. But I don't know that it has to be in the agreement. So I'm just, I'm just inquiring if uh, if we want some understanding of the uh one-thirty or a hundred, or a hundred and thirty million, or a hundred and seventy-five million, whatever the numbers are. If we want some details on that, we can get that in the staff report, but it doesn't have to be written into the agreement. I, I don't, I don't think so. Um, this gets me to the second point that I want to make is that I think the agreement gives Cal-Am the authority to demand of the, of the agency or the district, Monterey One or us. Uh, certain uh information that they may want at their discretion, on a timeframe that whatever it is that suits them, they have the right to do that. And I think we're giving them access, and that, that's not, that's not a particular problem to me. We do not have equal access to their information. And that, that's a little bit bothersome to me. Uh, and it, it goes, goes really to the point where um the rates it's in, in uh section eighteen of the agreement, it's at the bottom of the page, the page is seventy-five, but just for reference purposes. Um, uh, notwithstanding the commitment to the agreement, you know, the district or the agency shall oppose the effort to obtain approval of recovery in rates. So, so the issue is, we're not going to object to kind of the rate process. But I don't, and I'm not trying to find a position for us to see or oppose or whatever. I just think we ought to have the information. This is what the chair is talking about. How do we get the information? And get it available to the public, just so everybody knows what we're talking about. And I, I ju- I just think that the, the agreement generally, uh, there's somewhere else, and I don't know if I can find it really fast, but I don't want to spend much time on it. Um, they can ask anytime they want of the agency, which is Monterey One, to confirm the readings and the validation of the data on water purity, or whatever it is, the accepted, you know, the acceptance levels. They can add, demand it anytime, anywhere, any frequency, anything they want. We give them in this agreement the right to demand information from the other two parties, our two public parties. But we don't have an equal access to their information, and I, and I know they're proprietary and all that kind of stuff. But it just, it just kind of confirms the relationship that is awkward between a public agency and a corporation. And I think it highlights in my mind why we're in the business we're in, and why we're pursuing, you know, various angles on this water purchase agreement. Um, and it's just kind of getting the information out so that we know what we're dealing with. It's not, it may or may not change anything. And it's not that it's particularly important, because I have a inside information about, you know, some number that's going to be significant. I, I, none of that. It's just a matter of sharing the information with the public. And it's a concern I have, and I, I just hope that Cal-Am appreciates that the public agencies have a burden of transparency that they don't have. And we suffer with it, or we benefit from it. But whatever it is, the public benefits from information. And, and, and anyway, that's my point.
Okay, uh, General Counsel, you have some comments?
Yeah, I, I just would like to respond to um one comment, and that is if you don't put an amount in the agreement, assuming that's where the board wants to go, then basically um if you look at the four corners of the agreement, there's no limitation. And therefore, generally, what you would do, um, if you're trying to show um a position, it would be not to exceed a certain amount, the same way you do with your general contracts. Um, yes, uh, we will take a position up to X amount. Um, and therefore, it is something that, that should be stated in black and white. So that was the comment I wanted to make.
I, I will respectfully disagree. We would be putting a limit on our own purchase price of our, our own sales price of water.
No, I'm talking about um the stranded costs and the amount that if, if the board were to agree on stranded cost, that it would be an amount not to exceed, and that, you know, again, would be after the board had reviewed the information. And this was the figure that they had agreed was appropriate. You know, Cal-Am may say it's more, and, and the board may disagree and set a lesser amount. The parties, you know, may reach uh an agreement on that amount. But again, exercising your authority um needs to be reflected, and mere discussion. Once you sign off on the document, you are restricted to the four corners of the document. And believe me, that argument would be made vigorously if, if you tried to say, yeah, but we only agreed to X amount, um, and Cal-Am is requesting a Y amount recovery for stranded, stranded costs. So that was the comment.
Uh, thank you, thank you, General Counsel. I just want us in a provision that we should be able to talk and just not look the other way. You know, or, or pay no attention to it.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, and I, I don't want to get regressive in our negotiations, but we've discussed this before. The original request was blanket, non-opposition to cost recovery. Then it was offered to cap it at December thirty-first. We asked for board direction suggesting August thirty-first, and we received that direction, and that's where we came home to land. So to reopen this language, again, is um, is a, a little bit regressive.
Well, I, I believe the language that we approved was the date of when we're gonna cut off, when the board.
Right.
I don't believe we, uh, uh, we went through all the stuff, other stuff that we're talking about the date. Now, we set the date. We know what that date is, is August, and everybody, the public, know what it is, how much it is, and, and what, what we're gonna be doing with. I know it's hard. I know it's hard. But we need to find that out on that. Now, twenty E, twenty E, I don't think the board liked that one, and I don't like it either, because I'm, I'm not just gonna le- leave it open. If you do a small D cell in Marina, people are gonna be against it. And I think those people ought to be able to speak on, on, on that behalf, or I think the board ought to be able to speak. Because we don't know what it is. Some people think that we could add on to uh pure water a third time. So some people think we can add on a pure water a third time, so I, I like to have that option open to me. So twenty E, I, I'm against that. Um, any other comments? I know I took the floor a little bit.
Oh, if, if I, oh, go ahead, then, Amy, I'll win.
Go ahead, Director Adams.
Yeah, I, I agree about twenty E. Um one thing I'm curious about is the, the, the provisions for default, and um I had thought about what you said earlier about these thresholds kind of not really making sense in the real world, these hard numbers. Was there, was there any discussion? Let's say one of, a default was caused because there was equipment failure. I mean, it's a project. There's all kinds of stuff involved, filters and machinery in itself. Was there any discussion of, of uh saying why it happened and asking for time, and we've got this plan, and it's going to be fixed in four months, and uh, you know, that's, that's one option of dealing, of dealing with a default. I mean, this is really so hard-edged. Um, and as you said, if we could produce enough water to cover demand, is it a default? Uh, if we're saying, yeah, in four months, the production's gonna be back up, or it's a well problem or something, it just um, the hard edge of it just seems like somebody's really uh anxious to dissolve the agreement. And I, I don't expect a default. I'm just, at all, but, but projects like this, I mean, it's going to be fairly new. Uh, things could happen, and there should be something other than a kind of a, you know, chopping the head off.
Well, these are all the same events of default that were in the original agreement. Um, and, and they're structured in this manner to actually accommodate uh a failure mechanically. Uh, and so if you had a four-month outage or a six-month outage, we can actually deliver the company uh allotment by what we were able to deliver through actual production and a withdrawal from the operating reserve. That's why the operating reserve exists. So we do that. But the reason there, there's a three-year default. But the reason there, there's a three-year default and a two-year default and a one-year default is if the prob, if the project just simply isn't producing, or if we've made, uh, promises for source waters, and everybody believed it, and then suddenly we don't have those source waters in a chronic, long-term nature. Those are the protections that the company sought for being wrong, being, building the wrong project that couldn't deliver. Now, even if demand remains really low, and say, for example, uh, we hit a point where they don't need thirty-five-hundred plus twenty-two-fifty or fifty-seven-fifty. It's a contract to deliver that amount. That's what we've said that we will deliver. And so these events of default are set up for chronically not delivering on what we said we'll do. And that's why the two-year default's about eighty percent, the single-year default's about fifty percent. Um, and in order to say miss the single-year amount, you'd have to not operate for half the year and have no, uh, reserves available to deliver for another half the, the year and so forth. So it's all about, um, providing enough protection that we, that we actually delivered on what we said we would do. And, and that's really what it's all about. And, and actually, that's where Cal AM's twenty E, uh, you know, our, our current mess, uh, comes from as well, which is, hey, if you deliver, we're never going to trigger this. But if you can't deliver, then you've made a significant miscalculation somehow, and your plant just doesn't perform the way you told us it would. We got to go get a new water supply. So you, public agencies are now the bad guys, and we want your support in getting a new water supply. Now granted, we know that's not flying right now. But that's, that's what the intent was, is provide protections for things that we've said trust us. And they've said, well, what if you're not right? And so we think that, you know, all these events of default were in the original agreement. We kind of tracked through, through them, and we talked about, uh, earthquake, outages for earthquake, uh, workarounds. I think the biggest unknown is, you know, what could happen to source waters? Um, if there's a huge economic change or upheaval, or if you learn to, you know, irradiate vegetables instead of wash them, uh, you know, just different, different things like that. But, but they're, they're graded to be, you know, the, the bigger default, the higher number has a longer period of time, medium number, shorter period of time. Single-year default, very small threshold. So there, there's method to the madness, there, there really is.
Well, I see that structure is, is, uh, I mean, that's a good structure that, that was created for that, but I just wondered, um, okay, I understand what you're saying.
Oh, okay, um, this is another item, uh, GM, then I get to Director Rowley. The CPUC is asking for a supply and demand report from Cal AM. How do we then know, or how can we be able to question that supply and demand if we approve this document tonight, and they send up already in this document saying that the expansion is not going to be enough water?
Yeah.
How do we approach that?
Yeah, it's a great question because that proposed decision, that obviously we've announced that we're going to appeal, just opens a ridiculous can of worms. I mean, you've already got the company coming in and saying, you know, uncle, let's, let's do, let's cut a deal for the expansion. Um, we have said, let it run for a few years, and lift the CDO and look at what the growth rate really is, and that'll inform when additional supplies might be needed. Yeah, our view and, and their view, at least stated in paper, are in opposition. And in some respects, by choosing to enter into an agreement for the expansion, there's some recognition that maybe our numbers, at least, you know, current demand, looked a little bit closer than what they filed in testimony. Um, I, I think it's very challenging to dispute our growth forecast, even though there's a whole bunch of arguments about pent-up demand and so forth. Um, yeah, I don't know, it'll, it'll be a mess. That's why I think that this proposed decision was not just kicking the can down the road, but it was opening up a can of worms, so. Um, but, but we will have opportunity to, to brief and provide testimony and so forth, so it's not like our voice won't get heard, but, you know, it's what they asked for was not a, uh, was not the remedy to the complaint that we suggested.
Okay, and since that's open, um, I'll come back to my comments. Go ahead, Director Rowley.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion if we're ready to move forward. Um,
Go ahead.
I, 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 I would move that we continue this item for one month. Um, period.
Um, I like to, I like to second that, but I like to amend it. Let's make it for, uh, two months, sixty days, and we'll have a special meeting on it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Could, could we, before we head down the path, I know it's, it's easy sometimes to say, hey, let's sit on it for two months. This agreement to agree is very important to spending any money and getting the project moving. So if there's resolution on twenty E within a week, why wouldn't we come back in a month?
Well, we, we can.
How about if we say within two months?
Yeah.
Within two months or whatever, Director Malik, go.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay within two months, and if there's some, uh, movement ahead of that, then we'll deal with it sooner.
Right.
But I, I, I think it's, I think it's pretty clear, uh, Dave, where we may need more information, but not necessarily change of language as we go forward, and we, then we may not need that in a month, we may need it eventually, but uh, I, I, there, there are two angles to this. One is the language, and the other is some information about maybe the size of the, uh, costs, the stranded cost as of the end of August nineteen, and, and things like that.
Director Malik, go ahead.
What are we going to gain by postponing a week or a month or two months? Looks like we've done all the talking already. Looks like we have our positions um, individually. And it seems to me like tonight is just as good as any time to, to make a decision.
Well, to tell you truth, Director, I don't want to say no tonight. And I don't want to say yes tonight. I, 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 I don't want to kill it yet. I don't want to kill it. I, I wanted to keep, let's go, it's negotiation, and so happened, and now we're negotiating in public. So that's why I want to continue this. And plus, I want them to, the district or, or whoever to talk to Marina Coast, get that all cleaned up. So the next public hearing we have, um, everybody's happy. Go ahead.
So, so what are our marching orders between now and whenever we decide to convene to discuss this? Do we have, do we have a list of items? Do we have a to-do list that either Director Stolt or Counsel or us do anything in between? Or we're just going to sit on our hands and wait, or do this and hope for the best?
Well, I, I think I've been throwing out some stuff that I like to see on stranded costs. I think the board would like to see some different language on, on twenty E. Um, it, it was one that I'm going to send in that somebody else came out with. It, it, it is about, uh, Cal AM coming up with, uh, water, water rights on, on, on a, on a diesel project or whatever project they come out with. Do they have the water rights to it before it comes out? So those are, those are the kind of things I, I, I forward to, to the GM. Somebody else brought that one up, but I didn't hear nobody talk about it tonight. Go ahead there, uh, Vice Chair.
Yeah, well, there's two. If section twenty E is simply eliminated from the agreement, that can, then we can move forward more quickly. If we're going to revise the language and place conditions on it, like you raised the issue of water rights, like, uh, one of the conditions we might want, if we're going to support, uh, an alternative project at some point, then we have to put reasonable conditions on it, and then one of them would address that water rights point that you just raised. So it has to be a project for which Cal AM can demonstrate they have water rights, for example. That would be one.
Right.
And then there are others, and that would take probably a little more time to work out all those, those con, the conditions.
But I want to give it a time. I want to give it, uh, Cal AM some time to get their best study in, and let's see where, where it goes from there. Because, um, I'm, it'd be hard for me to say that, that pure water is going to be enough, and Cal AM's saying no, and they're going to need a bigger project. We might as well get that all out of the way now. That's why I'm giving it to sixty days.
So you're asking GM to, um, negotiate on our behalf a different language for twenty E, or see if that twenty E can disappear completely? What, what directions are we giving the GM?
To give some more language for twenty E, either get rid of it or come back with some reasonable that we can agree on. That's what, that's the direction we're going on that. Uh, Director Rowley.
Yeah, I, I, I just think we're, we're putting a, a burden on David Stolt uh, to negotiate some changes in an agreement that's already has agreement between the three parties. And, uh, so, and to the extent that we feel strongly about a few issues, and maybe we feel strongly about a lot more than a few, uh, we can't expect, uh, everything to be a change in the agreement. We can't expect Dave to walk in with a, an attitude, I suppose. That's, that's the board's super.
I agree.
That our board, this board, has some pretty strong feelings about some issues. And then he's got negotiating room to kind of figure out how and where and whatever, but he knows where the problem, he knows where the priorities are. It's, it's, it's around, uh, the main priority is around, uh, twenty E. Uh, and there's some around, uh, stranded costs, and there may be some around just inadequate data in some areas, and but not all of those are going to be changes to the agreement. Some of it's going to be information we're just going to get, and we should expect at some point, the public should expect.
Yeah, and there's going to be some things that Marina Coast Water District wants that they're not, they're simply not going to get. They're going to have to take on faith that we've addressed those. Um, I think the important thing is, you know, it's a three-party agreement, and all three parties need each other. So it's still a negotiation. You know, Monterey One Water could in fact sell water directly to Cal AM, but they can't build up the reserves that are required because they don't, they can't use sewer revenues to build those reserves. Um, you, you know, there's just, there's certain reasons each of the parties are in this thing. So we ought to be able to find a way to put it together so that all of us get our, our conditions addressed.
And that's all I'm looking, I'm just trying to give you enough time to look at it. If you can do it in a week or a week and a half, instead, uh, thirty days or sixty days, and everybody is just about satisfied, um, they can bring it back, I guess. I, I guess we can't send the agreement over to Monterey One and say what they question about it, or is it okay with them? Because I personally, I like it for them to went first, but they didn't. So here we are. So if they, if they want to bring it up at the meeting coming up, I like to hear their concern. But, um, we got a motion to continue for sixty days?
For up to sixty days, right?
Not to exceed sixty days.
Not to exceed sixty days, and, and it can come back whenever it, it's written. So, um, any other comments on that? Okay, roll call vote, please, Joel.
Uh, Chair Edwards, do we have a second on the motion? I believe I did hear Riley, but I just want to, um, confirm.
I believe Director Rowley made the motion, and I second the motion.
That's correct.
And Amy put her hand up just for a moment.
Okay.
I, I did, just, just
Go ahead.
Just because twenty, twenty E is really the focus of the, of the, uh, most passionate feelings about this. If that could go away, it would be great. If it can get changed so that a future board is not committed to blind support of something. Actually, it, it, in my view, it doesn't belong here because it has nothing to do with just a water purchase agreement. It's, um, there's a place for them to ask for coverage.
Yeah, and let's, let's go back to the motion maker. Who, who made the motion?
Director Rowley.
George, would you rephrase your, uh, motion to say no later than October eighteenth? Because that's an actual scheduled board meeting date, but it's more than sixty days out.
Uh, that's fine with me, yes.
I'll take that. I'll take that as a second, and just on the second, um, quickly. Hey, I know we're trying to get an agreement on a water purchase agreement, and I know we probably need a water purchase agreement that'll make the project go smoother. But if we can't get there, I think the district needs to look at other directions that we could take. I, if we can build it ourselves, fifty-five billion out there for water infrastructure, and by August, uh, by October eighteenth, I doubt if it would be approved by Congress, but it's out there. We need to look at other ways that we can do things. Water purchase agreement is good, we have a buyer for the water. But if we can't get there, we need to look at alternatives. Really look at them, really plan for them. I know that takes time, so I'm just putting it on the table. Go ahead, there, Vice Chair.
Yes, to that point, um, Chair Edwards, I just want to remind folks that the Water Supply Planning Committee has looked at this question at, at ways, and this is in the minutes, uh, that are in our agenda packet, the, uh, the minutes of the Water Supply Planning Committee uh, recent, uh, meeting. Um, we have looked at some uh, possible ways that we could finance the project. Um, I mean, I want to reach an agreement with Cal AM, move this forward, get the project started as soon as possible, but I completely agree. If that's not possible, we have to look at alternatives, and we have done that in a preliminary way in the water supply planning. Uh, we have five different conceptual ways that it might be possible to finance it without a water purchase agreement with Cal AM. Just want people to be aware of that.
Thank you. Okay, if not, anything, no further comments on this item? Roll call vote, please.
Director Malik?
Yeah.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, uh, next item, GM.
For the next item, uh, now that the fun part of our meeting has passed, is consider expenditure of funds for consultant services related to annual performance evaluation of general manager. Um, during the last review cycle, a subcommittee of the board was formed, uh, which developed and recommended a new appraisal format. Um, the in, in, the board hired an individual, uh, well, actually RJ, Management Services to manage that process rather than having, uh, the board clerk, uh, compile all of the individual appraisals and the board clerk and the chair uh, developing, uh, the board-wide single appraisal document. And, uh, Dr. Garcia did think that industry best practices would require uh, modification to that form that was used for the last cycle. Um, there was also a desire of the board to start tying the strategic plans objectives to, uh, the performance of the general manager. Uh, there was a desire to shift it from fiscal year to calendar year so that a sitting chair and vice chair would have almost a, a full calendar year with the general manager. And then, uh, at least the recommendation for at least one more year was to continue with a third-party facilitator for the process. The recommendation for at least one more year was to continue with a third-party facilitator for the process. So that's. Captured here with the cost estimate from RJA Management Services. Uh, if approved tonight, the timeline will work for. Uh, board review likely in November and then uh. A closed session with the general manager at December, which would be the last meeting of this board and board leadership uh, combined. Before uh, setting up the the new chair and vice chair.
Okay, any questions on this item? Any question on this item? There's no questions on this item? Let's take it to the public.
Yes, so if you would like to make public comment on item number nine, uh, please raise your hand or or start nine on your phone. Uh, Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised.
Thank you. Back to the board.
Yes.
Go ahead, there, uh, Director Clyde.
Yes, thanks. And and so uh, we're we're actually going through a process right now with our city manager. And obviously, we have a human relations department. And I've I've always been one who uh. I like to keep things simple and direct. And I'm just wondering if the review of the general manager is this complicated that it takes eighteen thousand dollars and an outside consultant? Maybe our process is a little bit too complicated. And also, I've been, uh, I've done a few of these over the years. I've also, as a teacher, gone through about thirty-five of them on my own. And I was always, uh, I always thought, I don't want to wait until an evaluation that my principal or supervisor. Wanted me to do something or thought I shouldn't be doing something. I want to know about it right now so I can correct it. And obviously, uh, as a mayor, I work very closely with our city manager more than I would with the the general manager of this board. However, my my point would be, uh, for the discussion, I'm not necessarily opposed to the expenditure. I just don't know. Those of you who've had this experience in the past, do we need to make that kind of expenditure? And is the process uh, a little bit too complicated that if it requires a third party to help us do it? And I would just throw that out for your thoughts.
Well, let me, let me start right quickly. We tried to do this for the last three years, and it seemed like um, last year went more smoother than the other two years. That that I was on the board to do. We had committees to try to come up with the forms. We had committees trying to come up with objectives and priorities, and and we just couldn't get there in time enough. By the time we got there, hey, hey, we probably uh, probably six, seven months into the general manager's evaluation. It was slow, it was dragged out. And 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 when I became chair last year, the the the. The board said, well, let's get a third party in here. Oh, that was fine by me. And it went a lot smoother. It did. Didn't have to come up with no committees and see when it can 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 meet. We didn't have to come up with. Uh, what, when we did, goals, priorities, and the objectives. Hey, we did it together, and it got done. So so this year, if it if it's eighteen thousand dollars, I I wouldn't want to spend it, but. But if it gets us through what we need to go through a lot smoother, I'll go through that. I'll pay that money. And another reason, even though this board is more, is more friendly. We had other board members that that, to tell you the truth, and I know. Couldn't get along with other board members or whatever, and it's hard for them to do evaluation of the GM, and they don't have a uh. Don't have nobody on their side or whatever. So it was better to have a third party come in, so they could talk to a third party, and the third party could talk to the GM. That's the kind of problems that that I seen last year that we came through and we got through them. So this year, I sit up there and say, well, eighteen thousand? I heard the administrative committee mention, why should we have to spend that? But if for what time consume, or trying to get the board together to come up with a valuation form, which he did. Are we supposed to evaluate the GM? So that's, that's the reason I'm 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 supporting it. This time. Now, next year, new, new, new chair, new vice chair. If they want to do it, fine. Let them do it. Go ahead, there, Director Ralph.
Yeah, I was on the committee that recommended a consultant, uh, mainly to kind of get some structure. That everyone could kind of agree to. This will be the second year with the structure. I think going one more year with the structure will give us a sense of. How the process works and the participation level and the questions that are asked and so on. And I think a year from now, or at least after the next evaluation, we might rethink. How we go about this, but I I think we needed a calming uh, structure. Going forward, and I think we got it with Garcia. And uh, anyway, I I think one more year with him will will be a good teaching lesson for all of us.
And he had given us the form that we need to evaluate, and it's a professional form. That's that's another one. Okay, any? Other board questions?
A move approval of the contract with uh.
I think you have to go to the public first.
I'm sorry.
I thought we went out.
Oh, we did. You're right. My bad.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion by Director Rowley and second by Director Adams. Uh, any comments on the discussion? If none, roll call vote, please. Oh.
Gracie.
Riley, he can't speak for you, Mayor. I'll get back there barking.
Okay, that's that's Gracie again.
Yeah, she can't speak for you. Okay, roll call vote.
Riley?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Roberson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. What's the next item, GM?
The last action item, item ten is consider expenditure of funds for prepayment of a portion of the mechanics bank loan. In the amount of five hundred thousand dollars, half a million dollars. Um, this fits within the quote-unquote excess collections over what was budgeted for the user fee. Um, and it will leave a residual balance of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. To put back into the district's reserves to repay internal borrowing for water supply projects.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, this is one time where you should feel good about spending half a million dollars.
Any other questions? Okay, Joel, let's ask the public if they have any comments on this item.
All right, so if you have any um, public input on item number ten, uh, please raise your hand. All right, it looks like we have a few hands raised here, so let me go ahead and share my screen. The directors, are you able to see um, the timer?
Yes, yes.
Uh, John Tilly, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, board members. John Tilly, Monterey Commercial Properties Association President. Uh, very pleased to see this idea of paying off the mechanics bank loan. It is both the genesis and also the outcome of the um, water supply charge. It came on to the uh, balance sheet of the district when the user fee went away. It was one of the main reasons why the water supply charge was put in place. And retiring this loan is a major step toward retiring the water supply charge in itself. So kudos, um, paid off the two seventy-seven. And let's go about retiring the water supply charge in general. Uh, everybody knows that water is very expensive around here, and one of the reasons it is is the water supply charge. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Susan Skivoni. Uh, Susan, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you. Um, as someone on the um, ordinance one fifty-two oversight committee, I'm happy to see this as well. It's something the committee has had a focus on, and I'm glad to see that it's happening. And uh, yes, it's a smile. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chair Edwards, I do not see any hands raised, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
All right, thank you.
Actually, I take that back. Uh, Tom, okay, it looks like Tom Rowley, but he put his hand down. So I return this back to the board.
Well, we can, if I don't hear Tom, I feel bad, but if he wants to.
He had his hand raised, and then he immediately took it down, so.
Okay, well, we, he missed one. I'm disappointed. Okay, back to the board.
I'll make a motion for approval of the recommendation.
Before you move it, could we close public comment?
All right, uh.
He has his hands.
We're gonna close public, we're gonna close public comments.
And entertain your motion.
Yeah, okay, we got a motion by Director Clyde, and who was that second? By Director Anderson?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yeah, just quickly on this section, uh, second for me. Uh, yeah, thank you, general manager, and the rest. Uh, yeah, I feel good about this one because we doing something that a committee been arguing or bringing up constantly, constantly. And we finally did something for them, the one fifty-two committee. So I'm glad we got that under our hats right now. So um, any other comments? If none, roll call vote, please.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, yeah. Motion passes. Is that the last item we have, GM?
It is. The rest are just informational items and staff reports for you and the public to read on their own.
Okay, does anybody want any discussion over those information items? If none, um, do we, board, do we need to go back in the closed session, or are we done on item eight? If not, we are adjourned. So no more closed session? Ain't nobody saying nothing?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, oh, go ahead, Director Rowley.
I I I think we should adjourn to closed session and then kind of close out some of the relationships between what we were discussing today. Uh, and then if we have to close out general session, uh, closed session in three minutes, that's fine with me, too. But I think we ought to. Adjourn to a closed session for a few minutes at least.
Okay, uh, any other comments?
Good idea.
Okay, okay, uh, General Counsel, do you have to read us back in the closed session for a few minutes?
All right, the uh, the chair is adjourning the regular meeting, and uh, the board will go into closed session for continued discussion. On PUC complaint C twenty-one dash oh five dash oh oh five, and provide additional direction to staff.
All right, thank you. Um.
Oh, the meeting is adjourned at eight twelve P. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to, we've got to get rid of participants, Joel.
That's right. So um, if you're an attendee, uh, please um, hop off of the meeting. Uh, for district staff that are appearing as a panelist, uh, please um, hop off the meeting as well, so that way it go off the meeting. For the closed session agenda. Uh, Mario, you can stop recording now.
Recording stopped.
I see one.
Yeah, there's still one. Uh, Jennifer, if you could hop hop off of the meeting. We greatly appreciate that.